Francis Zeeman and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, please watch out over all these here. Please guide those in whom the responsibility for faithful leadership rests. And please care for our wonderful city of Fairhope at all times, and especially during the upcoming hurricane season. For we know that all things are possible through you, and we offer these petitions in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on tonight's agenda, we have approved the minutes of November 25th, regular council meeting, minutes of the 25th work session, and minutes of the 25th agenda meeting.
Make a motion when you approve as presented.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Mayor, your report.
Thank you. It would be hard to take a drive through Fairhope and not see newly paved roads. It's been a busy year in public works, and I appreciate the hard work from all of the employees. The department has a multi-year plan that makes it easy to answer citizen concerns as to when a road will be paved. With 14 projects completed this year, we've accomplished a lot, and quickly. I want to thank the Fairhope Police Department. They held their annual breakfast with Santa this past Saturday, and around 200 children showed up for the pancakes and sausage breakfast with Santa. 120 coats, winter coats, were given out to children, and there were 60 extra gifts, including Under Armour socks, water bottles, and haircut certificates. Our tennis courts are busy beyond just its normal business. A Christmas round robin was held over the weekend to benefit the youth Rotary Club. Pictured here are the new pickleball courts, which are almost completed. I know they will be, have a lot of use. They're basically full all the time indoors. Please mark your calendars for the 2020 State of the City. It will be held on Thursday, February 6th, this year, of next year. And if you think last year's was an experience, wait until you see what our department heads have in store for you this year. It will be a fun and informative event for the whole family at the civic center. I'll update you on more details as we get closer to the date. The city of Fairhope launched a new platform last week aimed at helping spread kindness throughout the community. This platform provides a gateway for giving, all of our, giving to our citizens for our citizens. Through Neighborhood Bridges Fairhope, we are helping provide a gateway for kindness to connect people with specific needs with citizens who want to help make their lives brighter. Here is a general video about the platform, which is now available in about 20 communities in two states. And, I'm gonna get Joe to start it, or do I do it on my end?
[inaudible]
Okay. Can you turn it back? And, just to go through a little bit more on this, Neighborhood Bridges was, started in 2017 as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization designed to utilize technology and social media to advocate for children and families in need by engaging the community to fill those needs. Neighborhood Bridges is about kindness, speed, efficiency, and bridging all community resources to drive direct support and care to our neighbors. The rise of poverty in suburban America has been swift and dramatic. More Americans now live in poverty in rural and suburban communities than in large urban centers. Here in Fairhope, we've experienced tremendous growth of more than 44% in 10 years. And while our community is full of wonderful organizations doing great work and meet the needs of our residents, a platform like this will match resources for these needs quicker and allow our giving community a simple way to fill the need quicker. How did it come to Fairhope? In 2017, the city completed the South Fairhope Study and identified needs of elderly homeowners for small home repairs. The spring of 2018, our Economic and Community Development Department began discussing with local faith leaders to develop a Mission at Home effort to meet those needs. Due to the multiple liability issues, Mission at Home wasn't possible. But when Neighborhood Bridges met with us this summer, this past summer, to discuss how the platform would work, we felt it was a perfect solution. The two truths driving Neighborhood Bridges is that there are real unmet needs in this community, including here in Fairhope. And there is also an ample supply of kindness and resources to help fill those needs. Examples of the kindness, really, it's endless examples, where there are some communities that are doing this just for schools and children. We're opening it up for any smaller need, and it's not gonna be for systemic, long-term needs, but we do have advocates that can help with those. This is what the website looks like. You just fill in your information, or if there is something of need, you fill it in. And, I'm gonna give you the address, because it's very, very simple, and you'll get an email every Monday. You can sign up on fairhopebridges.com to get more information, and you can also email us, and this goes directly to our Economic and Community Development Department, fairhope@neighborhoodbridges.org. And the last seven days, we have filled, since we've launched this, we have filled every single need many times over. I do have a feeling that Fairhope will be one of the many cities that have more people who want to give than there are needs. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on the agenda is public participation. If you are here for item number seven, the Live Oaks Estate PUD, that item has been pulled. It had to be re-advertised due to changes of the PUD, so that will not be introduced. And item number eight, the site plan approval and multiple occupancy project application has been laid over as well. So, item number seven and eight has been removed from the agenda tonight. So, if you would like to speak on items nine through 33, please come to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes. Okay. Okay. Closing public participation, council comments. Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to ask you a question. Can I address you for a moment on the subject of jurisdiction of zoning ordinances that I think you may be interested in pertaining to both of these? Last time I was here, you said that you could not have jurisdiction over zoning in the county. So I did some study. Am I free to speak about this? David Wetzel, 10242 Windmill Road.
Sure, I give you three minutes, sir.
Okay, I'll make it brief. You can petition the state of Alabama and get ordinances, your zoning ordinances extended beyond city of Fairhope's boundaries. This big PUD up here, I was told after the meeting, somebody said, "Well, yeah, they had to approve it, because if they didn't approve it, the county would approve it." But this way, they have some control over it. So, I looked at the history, and all sorts of cities and municipalities in the state of Alabama have extended their zoning ordinances, land use zoning, beyond the city boundaries. It requires a request to the state. It is most often granted. You don't have to just do, have your zoning go right up to the border of the city and then stop there.
There's more to it than that. I can assure you, but I don't know if Hunter wants to address this, but...
It's complicated a little bit. It takes a little bit...
Well, we can't extend our zoning beyond our limits, and there, anyway, I'm, Hunter, if you would want to come up and answer the question?
And, one of those is in the powers of the planning, under the planning permission, and what we can do within that jurisdiction is subdivision regulations, but not zoning. There may be some exception. And if you have that language, I'd like to give you my email and you can see it.
I would be very interested to have you look it up and read in the case studies in the state of Alabama. It took me many hours of reading to dig this up. It's not that simple, and you're not that handicapped. Many municipalities have had problems with growth. The state recognizes that when a city is growing, their border's gonna go into a county or unzoned land, and they need to have some control over what goes on. It was very clear.
Get that information to Planning Director Hunter.
I want you all to have that information. I'm not interested in this, ma'am, having that information.
I'll pass it to everybody. If you get that, we could definitely pass that along to all the council people and pick it out. I think the zoning is especially interesting, if there's a way to do that.
It is. There's case after case study of it. I read it. I will look it up again. It took me a while, but it's definitely there.
Are you talking about county zoning? Because I've...
You go to the state. The state extends your city's own ordinance, zoning ordinances, takes it away from the county, and gives it to you upon request when you show reasonable cause, particularly related to rapid growth. It's in the state government. That's what I came up here to say. And also, as a citizen, if I find fault with a zoning change, I can bring that into question and put it up for questioning. It's not necessarily a done deal. And if you have a way to have authority and you don't take it, then that throws that zoning process into question, and I am not beyond questioning it.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you my card, too.
Y'all have a good evening.
Okay. We definitely want to hear from you.
Council comments. Council McConaughey?
I don't have any comments, other than thank you to everybody who came to the Christmas parade. It was a great evening, and there were so many floats that I think we caught up, had to pause for about 20 minutes and wait for all the floats to pass.
It was painful.
So, great evening, great event.
Councilman Boone?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the city employees that worked so hard on that after hours to make it such a success, and thank you very much.
My only comment is, come out to Fairhope Brewery Friday night and support the Fairhope Education and Enrichment Foundation. The council members will be bartending. All tip money goes towards FIF, so come out and support, if you would. That's all I have. All right, item number five is a public hearing to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, request to rezone the property of the Rosetta Wasp and Mildred Brown from R2 medium single-family residential district to B3B tourist resort commercial service district. Property is generally located at 309 South Ingleside Street, Fairhope, Alabama. House, am I introduce?
I'll introduce ordinance.
Thank you. Hunter?
Thank you. Counsel? Before I jump into this one, I want to make a clarification on what we do, because to think that we don't do anything in zoned property and we don't review things, you know, anywhere within our planning jurisdiction, we do apply subdivision regulations. So there is some level of review and control, if you will, but that is limited. You know, it's not, zoning ordinance doesn't apply there. So, just a quick clarification, not to deagle too far from this request. But what we do have at, on Ingleside, is the intent immediately to use the house that resides, dislocated, and y'all, please forgive me, this is kinda swapped around, so my PDF is a little different, but the zoning map there shows the location. It is currently R2 zoning, adjacent to B4. This is in the medical overlay district. So, and the request is B3B. And the applicant came, I think that was more staff recommendation on that choice of zoning. There is no B3B there, but, which some people might start looking at spot zoning, so the question, I have been questioned why that choice. We looked at what allows restaurants to begin with, and then you also look, you hear different things, transects, you know, what is appropriate zoning. We look at transitions from M1 to B4, and then we know on the other side, there's R2. So, B3B fit here, and the name might trick you a little bit, because that's tourist district zoning, and when we think of tourist district, it's not to be confused with what happens down south of us in the TR district. This is a, mostly you will find this down around the pier and those areas, and that's what we think of as tourists. But also, the hospital is a big regional draw for the city, and we do have people, not here for vacations, but out of town and other, so I think that was conceptually what's happening in the medical overlay district. Some of the things allowed there is where we kinda made that correlation. So, what we have to do and consider is all the other uses that can be allowed in B3B. And we kinda took a deep dive on those, and at first, I think with going over this, that was my biggest worry, but when you look at some of the extra requirements and special conditions, there's, and also what is allowed in the medical overlay district, there was no additional properties. I mean, you could do a storage unit, but you had to have certain acreage to do that. You could do mixed use. And at first, that was kind of my worry, but our medical overlay allows that anywhere, regardless of the underlying zoning. So, there wasn't really anything that just jumped out of the page that was scary to go to a base zoning district. The comprehensive plan, as we said, this isn't in the comprehensive plan as a village, but it is acknowledged, the medical overlay district is, and basically, public facilities, which the hospital will be defined as, and those supporting things. So it's not, it's not out of line to think that restaurant is supporting that. I think we've kinda seen a little bit of that happening with Warehouse Bakery and District Hall in the M1, and I think just before I came, we've amended M1 to allow residences in that, in that district. So, that wasn't out of line or out of character with what's happening nearby. There wasn't anything else, and we can kinda flip through and catch our site plan. This is the area of the lot. Now, we're not approving under this, I want to be clear, this is not a PUD, so we're not approving a site plan. This is kind of, this is what the applicant is looking at right now. It is a reuse of the hot house that is there with a little expansion to update. And, we lost a site plan. So, there were, this did make it through Planning Commission with two recommendations. One, there is an old plat here that has setbacks required that are different from the way we would interpret things today, and this is also changing a use, so the setbacks would change. So one of the requirements that we'd like to make is to have this, those old setbacks removed from plat and new and shown. And then also in the discussion, I don't know if we can zoom in here, but this section of, there's sidewalks coming down Ingleside, but then there's a, and also on Nichols here. But then we have a gap, and as most of you know, Warehouse Bakery, that lot of traffic, pedestrian and bike traffic there, and we have kind of a gap where there's, there is no sidewalk. So the discussion of sidewalks included on site, because there's a drainage ditch there in front and right of way. So I think the applicant was, was going to consider that as well.
All right. Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
This time, we'll open the public hearing if there's anybody to speak.
I don't have a lot to add. My name's Larry Smith. I'm a civil engineer for the project. But yes, when we come through with the replat, that's when the subdivision regs will be coming into effect on us, which will require the sidewalks anyway. I did have conversations with Hunter about where those could be placed. We'll most likely have to, within that replat, put a sidewalk easement, because there's not enough room in the right of way for the drainage ditch and a sidewalk. But we have plenty of room to be able to do that. And then, I'll be here to answer any of the public's questions, or any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else? Close public hearing. Council, y'all have any questions? All right, I guess we'll allow this to lay over to the next meeting. All right. Item number six is a public hearing as well, amend zoning ordinance number 1253. That's gotta be amend, a request to amend number 1273, known as East Park Subdivision. Planning unit development, property of Wendell and Charlotte Barnhill is located on the north side of Parker Road between US 98 and High Ridge Road at 7625 Parker Road.
I'll introduce ordinance.
Thank you. Hunter?
Thank you again. The site plan you see on the screen is the current proposal for an amendment to an existing PUD. So in 2005, there was an existing mobile home park that received a PUD, and since our PUDs don't expire, this was the, there was still one, and I'll try to kinda show you. It got, gets twisted a little bit, but this is what was improved in, in 2005. The, there's 47 lots, and the proposal today reduces that to 42. It does add a component of a B2 lot on Parker Road. But we're, I think, looking at this, it reduces the roads and impervious surfaces, adds more green space in the residential component, adding some uses, recreational uses there. There is an easement on 298 that really can't be improved to public standards, but can be utilized by the residences on that lot. B2 use is requested. This is a PUD, so council has the prerogative, if they so choose, to limit the uses within This made it through, and Planning Commission recommendation was, there were a couple of stipulations here, and I think we've already addressed most of these. The Planning Commission recommendation and conditions were, in addition to accessory structures, also prohibit accessory dwellings to make use of rearranged green space, added walking trail. Those two have been done to provide an easement to the access to the pump station that is on site, and we will, we will do that at plat phase. You okay with that? And to provide proof of the western easement that provides secondary access on to Greeno. And we have a copy of that easement, and we can include that in the ordinance as codified, if you so choose.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. This time, we'll open the public hearing for item number six.
Thank you, Tom Granger with Sawgrass Consulting, and I'm just here to answer any questions if you have them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else here to speak on item number six? This time, we'll close the public hearing. Council, y'all have any questions for Tom? All right, seeing no questions, we'll allow this to lay over to the next meeting. Item seven has been pulled. Item number eight, we're gonna introduce it. Is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 1631 and ordinance number 1656 to extend moratorium on the filing of rezoning, site plan approval, and multiple occupancy project applications within the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope through and including May 1st, 2020. Has somebody introduced that?
I'll introduce ordinance.
We did.
No, it need to be introduced. It's gonna be later until next meeting.
All right. Seeing no further action, we'll let this lay over to the next meeting. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes the city of Fairhope to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Fairhope on behalf of its police department, Fairhope PD, and the University of South Alabama on behalf of its police department, USA PD, to set out duties and obligations for protection of life and property and the delivery of police services on the USA Fairhope campus. John, you mind coming up and giving the council explanation of that?
So, most simply put, it's just a understanding between our department and South's department, how we would respond or take any action on any of their campuses around Fairhope, not to be limited, but to how we would make them aware of any action that was taken or any incidents that occurred in a timeframe, which would be like 24 hours to get that done, just to, basically to open up better lines of communication between the two departments.
All right. Thank you. You get a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Item number 10, resolution that the city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the Bowlin County Commission, Bowlin County Sheriff's Office, Bowlin County Public Schools, and the city of Fairhope regarding the school resource officer program at Bowlin Public Schools by amending Part II. Employment of the school officers of the MOU to add an additional SRO at Fairhope High School, which has been determined a need, and an increase in funding has been approved by the Board of Education for Fairhope. Kind of self-explanatory, council, y'all need any?
Make a motion when you approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
A second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 11 is a resolution to award bid for a backhoe trailer for the Water Department to Cowan Equipment Company Incorporated with a total bid proposal not to exceed $16,548.
Make a motion when you approve the resolution as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 12 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement for the Quail Creek Clubhouse Roof Repair for the Public Works Department from Roof Doctors with a total cost of $28,200. Richard Johnson touched on this in the work session. Does anybody have any further questions?
I'll make a motion when you approve as presented. I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 13 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure two firewall security systems for the city departments, and the items are available through the OMNIA Partners contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $73,529.56. Is Jeff Montgomery available? You mind touching base on item number 13, Jeff?
Yeah, so this was, we went over this during budget. This is replacing our existing firewall that's basically aged out. They, they're no longer supported. We can't load new software on it, so new, all new firmware updates, all new software updates can't be loaded on our existing firewall, so we've got to replace it. We've had our existing one for about five years, and the lifespan is usually five to 10 years, but we kind of got in the middle of the cycle on the old one.
Got you. Budgeted item.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, if y'all remember right, kind of important, I saw where City of Pensacola was hacked.
Yeah, they were today.
So, uh, don't know if it was related to the event or not.
Right. That's a shame.
Counsel, y'all have any further questions?
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion? Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 14 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure components for the virtual desktop infrastructure for the IT department, and the items are available through the OMNIA Partners contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $245,980.06. Jeff, you don't mind?
I'm going to let Sean Sprowl, our system administrator, speak on this item.
Thank you, Sean.
Hey, bro. Like the other one, it was on, it was a budgeted item. We're just trying to get away from the general desktop arena and move some users to a virtual desktop, eventually everybody. But it's more, it's easier for us to manage and implement and less time consuming. So in the end, we'll end up saving money, but...
Right. Another budgeted item, counsel.
I'm unable to download all the items. How close are we, within, within budgeted range or?
I think it's like $11 short of the budget.
$15.
Pretty strong.
$15. I could do better.
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Motion, got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Thank you, Sean. Item number 15, that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure four 2019 Chevy Tahoe PPVs, including optional equipment, installed equipment, and lighting package for the Fairhope Police Department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department purchasing bid list, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost will be $166,726.32.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Got them, two motions and a second? Kim, I guess we've got money to pay for all this stuff, right?
Um, next to all is...
Won't be in for a while. Okay. All right, got a motion and a second? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 16 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase a 2020 Ford F-250 Supercad four-by-two pickup for the Public Works Department. Type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Bid of Purchasing Bid List, therefore does not have to be let out for bid, and the total cost is $26,469.
Make a motion we approve this?
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Is that a budgeted item? I'm assuming?
Budgeted, it's under budget by $1,500.
Perfect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 17 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure potting soil for fiscal year 2020 for the Public Works Department from Sungrow Horticulture Incorporated as sole source distributor and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama 1975, section 41-16-5113, contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there is only one vendor or supplier, and contractual services and purchases of personal property, which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. The cost will be $49,135. Counsel, do y'all have any questions? Potting soil?
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 18 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of flower plantings for the fiscal year 2020 for the Public Works Department for landscaping throughout the city. Flower plantings will be procured from Billy Harrison Associates, CJ Rugrock and Sons, and Shore Acres Plant Farm with a total amount estimated at $133,577.42. It's a pretty good estimate. Counsel, y'all have any questions?
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion? Get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 19 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to procure Windcam Software annual update for the camera truck and sewer department from Windcam LLC as sole source distributor and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama 1975, section 41-16-5113, contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there is only one vendor or supplier, contractual services and purchases of personnel property, which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. Cost will be $34,076. So, budgeted item.
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 20 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of a Trojan UV Cigna Ultraviolet Disinfection Equipment for the Sewer Department from Jim House and Associates as sole source provider for Trojan Technologies Municipal Systems, aftermarket parts, and service in the state of Alabama. The units must fit into our existing standardized system and are exempt from the formal bid pursuant of Code 1975, section 41-16-51B7. The cost will be $365,000. Another budgeted item that was discussed in the budget process, counsel. Y'all have any?
I guess I just would have the question, what is the life cycle or lifespan on something like this? What's anticipated?
Richard Pearson?
I think the one we're replacing is close to 20 years old. I wouldn't anticipate the life cycle being quite that long, though the electronic parts will be replaced. But, but the one we have in place now, you can't get replacement parts for anymore, so this is going to the next generation.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve it as presented?
Got a motion? And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 21 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope has voted to purchase 10 three-phase pad-mount transformers for the electric department's inventory and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama 1975, section 41-16-51B7. The total cost will be $122,234. Counsel, y'all have any questions?
Make a motion that passes resolution?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 22 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement for electrical service to slips at Fairhope docks for the Public Works Department from various vendors with a total unbudgeted cost not to exceed $25,000. This will be a forced account public works project, meaning we will oversee all elements of the project and self-perform most of the work. Richard Pearson, is that you? Give us a little bit, or Johnson, Richard Johnson, you mind?
As discussed earlier in the work session, we, as we have been replacing bulkhead and exposed the existing electrical service in the slips, like for example at G-Dock, the system out there is not, not maintainable. It's unsafe, and we originally were just going to put conduit in to, for future electrical upgrades, but after the electric department and Mr. Commandant has looked at it, it was unsafe, and we're wanting to go ahead and put in the new service today so that, that we can backfill that and have a safe electrical service for our customers down there.
Does that, does that include new pedestals at the?
We already have most of the pedestals, I think all but two of the pedestals we already, we bought in previous.
Yeah, they're already purchased. So yes, they will get new pedestals.
Counsel, do y'all have any further questions?
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 23 is a resolution that the city council hereby approves to allow parking of RVs behind the library with the following street and lot closures. Close the parking lot behind the public library, plus the south side of Magnolia Street adjacent to this lot, west side of School Street adjacent to this lot, to permitted RV parking only from 5:00 PM Friday until 2:00 PM Sunday, two weekends prior to Mardi Gras Day, Knights of Ecorus Parade, and from 2:00 PM Friday until 10:00 AM Tuesday, weekend prior to Mardi Gras, made of Jubilee on Friday night and Order of Mystic Magnolia on Monday night, and permitting fees and regulations. Lisa?
This is something that we did last year for the first time, and all we did this tweak this was to actually make it to where it didn't specify the date, so it doesn't have to come back before council.
Sounds like a good idea. Counsel, y'all have any further questions?
Just always like to ask the police, I think we may have done it another year, if they had any issues with any of the guests last go-around. I don't see anybody anymore, so...
Richard Johnson, you mind seeing if John Hemrick's out there?
He has departed today.
Okay.
All right.
Well... Guess we'll assume there was no issues.
I guess so.
I believe if there had been, we'd have heard about it.
Yeah. Good point.
Make a motion we approve this resolution?
Got a motion?
A second?
You got a second? I'm sorry. I didn't hear the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 24 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club for appropriation of $50,000 to help manage and operate the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club facility. Budgeted appropriation.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
Got a motion and got a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Item number 25 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Fairhope Power Booster Club Incorporated for an appropriation of $10,000 to assist in construction, renovation, equipping, and financing of capital improvement projects for all women's and men's facilities for both Fairhope Middle School and Fairhope High School. Another budgeted appropriation.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 26, resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and Mobile Bay National Estuary Program for an appropriation of $15,000 to support activities related to stormwater education and watershed management.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 27 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance for an appropriation of $15,000 to support economic development facilitation within the City of Fairhope.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 28 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Downtown Fairhope Business Association for the appropriation of $20,000 to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 29 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract with Eastern Shore Art Center for use of city facilities and for an appropriation of $20,000 for funds to support and sponsor the educational programs through the Art Center's Academy of Fine Arts.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 30 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute a contract between the City of Fairhope and the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce for an appropriation of $21,000, which includes $15,000 for the annual leaders council program to advertise and promote the City of Fairhope.
Make a motion we approve as presented?
Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item 31 is a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to execute an agreement between the City of Fairhope and the Cambridge Court property owners to repair the drainage system downstream of the Cambridge Court Public Street. The property owners will cover the full cost of the repairs performed by the Public Works Department. City of Fairhope has determined this serves a public purpose due to the need to protect the public infrastructure and overall health of the watershed. Councilman Conyers recusing himself from this vote?
Oh. How do we do this? I'll make a motion.
You make a motion.
Make a motion, we pass the resolution.
Pass him. A second? A motion?
They give us back to you?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 32. Item 32 is a resolution authorizing Council President Jack Burrell to negotiate a professional services contract, i.e. engagement agreement, with Local Government Services LLC of Delanauga, Georgia, to act for and on behalf of the City of Fairhope in such matters as described in this resolution. The negotiated contract engagement agreement is to be brought back before the governing body of the City of Fairhope for final adoption and approval. Counsel, y'all have any questions that leases for cell towers and such?
I'll make a motion we approve as presented?
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. Item number 33 is appointments to the Fairhope Public Schools Commission. Item number thirty-three is appointments to the Fairhope Public Schools Commission. The appointments will be as such, one-year term will be Hill Robinson, Tanya Bossarge, and Ken Cole. Two-year will be Robert Brown, myself, Carrie McLemore, and Robin Coleman. A three-year term will be Miranda Shrubby, Danielle Mashburn Myrick, and Cornelius Woods. Counsel, do you have any questions about those appointments?
Just thank you to everybody willing to serve, but also I have had other people ask me in the future, what will be the process, as you've got them staggered, so every year you'll have three people roll off, what will be the process for new people being interested in serving?
Turn in an application with city clerk.
Okay, same as any committee.
That's right.
Got it.
And the, just as the EAC was tasked with staying diversified with representation from J. Larry Newton, this commission as well is tasked with trying to be diversified with having representatives from each school district. So, nothing changes, it's basically just changing the name and adding the number of members to the nine on a rotating basis. So, any other questions?
I recommend, I recommend we approve the nine candidates as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Thank you, counsel. Item number thirty-four, public participation, you get three minutes on any item you wish Perfect. I'll close public participation. I'll read this letter as we enter executive session. As City Attorney Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request the City of Fairhope Council go into executive session based on thirty-six dash twenty-five A dash seven A six to discuss the consideration the city is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property. The discussions could have a detrimental effect upon the competitive position of the city and the negotiations if the matter was discussed in public. City Attorney McDowell does hereby declare the City Council of City of Fairhope rise from regular city council meeting on Monday, December ninth, two thousand and nineteen, to go into executive session. City council should be in executive session for approximately, I'm gonna say fifteen We'll be back here five after seven. At the end of executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting. Time is currently, I'll say it's seven fifty-three, and I don't plan on the council taking any action when we return.
Six fifty-three.
Six fifty-three, I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second?
No motion?
Oh, yeah, make a motion, somebody?
Second.
Second? What am I doing? I'm over here talking. All right.
Behind the singing area.